Welcome to tonight's forum where we will hear from candidates for St. Peter Mayor and City Council. This forum is being recorded by St. Peter Public Access TV in its entirety without an audience on September 26, 2023 at the St. Peter Community Center. The recording will be available on the St. Peter League of Women Voters website, on the St. Peter Public Access TV, and on their YouTube channel. The St. Peter Mankato League of Women Voters is hosting this forum together with our co-hosts, the St. Peter Herald and the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce. My name is Margot W. Duschel, and I will be your moderator tonight. I'm a member of the St. Peter Mankato League of Women Voters. Assisting me is Lynn Solo, also a member of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters, LWV Minnesota, and our local leagues. Post-complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. The League encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Our event tonight is designed to inform voters about the relevant views of these candidates. Tonight, we will ask our candidates questions submitted by the public to the League of Women Voters St. Peter via email prior to this evening. League question facilitators and the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce Director Ed Lee screen all questions and may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. Questions that are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. As forum moderator, I have the final responsibility as to which questions will be asked. Our candidates are seated alphabetically by mayor, followed by city council candidates seated alphabetically by numbered ward. Our mayoral candidates are Ed Johnson and Shanann Noel. Our city council candidates, Ward 1 Kerry Johnson, unopposed. Ward 2 Brad DeVos, Charlie Rustman, Josh Weisenfeld, and Chuck Seaman. Our format for this evening includes that candidates will have 1 minute 30 seconds for opening and closing statements. After opening, questions will be asked on a rotating basis, and after asking each question... Actually, would you prefer it before?
Either way.
Okay. After asking each question, I will read the order in which the questions will be answered. Candidates will have 1 minute 15 seconds to answer. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have 1 minute 30 seconds to make closing statements. Our timers will hold up a yellow sign when 15 seconds are left and a stop sign when your time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentences. Are you all able to clearly see the timers and their signs? Thank you. We have asked each candidate to be specific in their opening statements as to the reasons they are running for office and what unique qualities, skills, experience, or expertise that they would bring to the job. Our opening statements will be given in the order that candidates are seated alphabetically, beginning with mayoral candidate Ed Johnson.
Hello, my name is Ed Johnson. I'm running for mayor because I want to continue to serve you and this community in a greater capacity. And I'd also like to thank the League for hosting this forum tonight. I am a lifelong resident of St. Peter with a long history of service. To list a few, I have served on the city council for four years and mayor pro temp for two of those years, as well as the hospital commission for four years. I've been a volunteer firefighter in St. Peter for 18 years, and for the past 12 years, I've taught over 500 St. Peter youth fire safety each year. My business experience includes managing the Redmond Club in St. Peter for the past 37 years. I bring a common sense approach to leadership that puts St. Peter first and value to all members of the community. I'm willing to listen to all ideas and ensure we can make St. Peter a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shanann Noel.
First, thank you to the League, the Chamber, and the Herald for hosting this event. My name is Shanann Noel, and St. Peter has been my home for 18 years. I've served on the council since December 2019, and I've been mayor since 2020. I care about our residents, and I love connecting with you on the issues that matter most to you, both big and small. I'm proud to represent you in local, regional, and statewide conversations about matters that affect you. St. Peter is a wonderful community, and I want to keep working for you to propel us to a brighter future. We say St. Peter is a place where history and progress meet, and I don't want that tagline to be aspirational. I have and will continue to provide leadership that is strategic and forward-looking. I will continue to be a strong voice for progress on the council. I will continue to be an advocate for careful stewardship of tax dollars. I will continue to seek common sense solutions. I pledge to continue initiatives that provide a variety of housing options, to build on the strengths of our diverse community, and to seek a sustainable and green future for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Beginning with city council Ward 1 Kerry Johnson.
Thank you. My name is Kerry Johnson, and I'm running for reelection in Ward 1. While I'm running unopposed, it is still important for me to be here and earn your vote once again and to share why I want to continue to do this important work. I am dedicated to public service and do not take my role as your representative for granted. I understand that the policies we implement and the decisions we make on the council are directly felt by our constituents and for generations to come. Before each vote or decision I make, you can be assured that I weigh each decision carefully. I seek stakeholder input. I learn from the expertise of city staff. I ask thoughtful questions, and all of this is to ensure that my vote or decision is for the greatest good. In my time on the council, I've served as liaison on various city boards and commissions and have even taken on additional leadership roles on the Regional Economic Development Alliance as vice chair and as the second vice president serving on the Board of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. These opportunities have allowed me to advocate for the unique needs that we face in Greater Minnesota and to shine a light on St. Peter's contributions to our region's vitality. I love St. Peter, and it's a privilege to serve the community where I live, work, and where I'm raising my family. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Ward 2, beginning with Brad DeVos.
I'd like to thank the League, Chamber, and Herald for making this forum possible. I'm Brad DeVos, and God has blessed me to serve for the last four years as a councilmember for Ward 2. I've not... You'll have the opportunity to cast two votes this year for candidates on the South Side. And while I'm hoping you would cast both of them for me, apparently that's not allowed, so now I'm hoping you'll cast one for me instead. The tenacity I brought as treasurer to a struggling childcare center I brought to reviewing city budgets. I've stayed up late nights and weekends digging into line items to find gaps in budgets, and I've refused to accept "we've always done it this way" as an answer. Serving on the Economic Development Authority Planning and Zoning Commission and Public Works, I've had a seat at the table for each of the major development projects over the last four years, including four apartment complexes to bring housing desperately needed to St. Peter. But this job is more than just budgets and development. I've been a major advocate for clean energy, which is leading to construction this fall of a large solar array. And on diversity, equity, and inclusion, we've launched community conversations to help gain the perspective of disadvantaged groups. As I said, it's been a blessing to serve the last four years. I hope you feel I've served you well, even if we haven't always agreed. And I hope that you'll support me again on November 7.
Thank you. Continuing in Ward 2, Charlie Rustman.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Rustman. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Herald, and the Chamber for putting this on this evening. My roots run deep in the St. Peter community. I'm the son of parents who have managed very successful businesses in St. Peter. I was born and raised in St. Peter. I made 2005 graduate of St. Peter High School. I am currently raising two young children who should also be graduates of St. Peter High School when their time comes. For the last 10 years, I have served on the St. Peter Volunteer Fire Department. And for the last 17 years, I've worked right here in St. Peter at Giraffe Industries. When I started there, I was a welder on the floor, and through hard work and dedication, I have worked my way to the production manager within that company. I bring to this council that hard work and determination. I bring with me a common sense, no-nonsense approach with a highly vested interest in this city continuing to prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, continuing with Ward 2, Josh Weisenfeld.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joshua Weisenfeld, and I would like to be your city council representative. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the St. Peter Chamber, and the St. Peter Herald for hosting this event and welcoming me as a participant. I would also like to thank everyone watching this from home for being a member of our community and participating in the democratic process. I was born and raised in St. Peter. I attended our public schools and graduated from Gustavus. These experiences have given me a lifelong perspective of the unique needs and potential for our community. After graduating from Gustavus, I attended law school and have been a practicing attorney since. As an attorney, I've had the privilege of working with many different people. My practice also heavily involves working with administrative agencies and advocating for ideas. As such, I want to bring my experience both as a person and a professional to our community. Tonight, I'd like to share a few priorities of mine. First, I want to bring the community together. I have always felt at home in St. Peter, a feeling that is fostered by social connection and cultural stimuli. From this, I pledge to work tirelessly to assure that other people can find a home in our town, just like I have. Second, I pledge to work with small businesses. Small businesses create jobs, foster innovation, and provide a sense of identity to our town. Third, I pledge to strengthen our city's strategic plan, allowing us to build a sustainable and resilient community that will take us and our children into the future. In conclusion, I'm here before you as a proud product of our community driven by a passion to see it flourish. I'm here to listen to your concerns, share my ideas, and work together to build the future for our beloved town. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final candidate for Ward 2, Chuck Seaman.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Seaman. I'm a candidate for city council for Ward 2. I was born and raised on a dairy farm about an hour northwest of here, just south of Hutchinson. I spent my freshman year at Gustavus, and then I transferred and I graduated from the University of Minnesota with a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration. My wife, Woody, is a native of St. Peter and has retired from teaching. And Woody was an ESL, English as a Second Language teacher during her teaching tenure. I have been a resident of St. Peter for 47 years. I have previously served my community for four years on the council, city council, and also for three years, free terms, excuse me, as mayor. I was checking, I believe I've served at one time on all, every board and commission that the city has, except for the library board. I am running again in the hope of restoring common sense and fiscal responsibility to the city of St. Peter.
Thank you all. Our first question is, what are the top three issues you would like the city council to address and why? The order for answering questions begins with Chuck Seaman, second Kerry Johnson, third Ed Johnson, fourth Josh Weisenfeld, fifth Shanann Noel, sixth Brad DeVos, and seventh Charlie Rustman. Chuck.
All right. The top three issues that I would like to take priority in would be to stress the defending of the police instead of defunding the police. We have been in a lot of turmoil in this community in years past for this reason. It seems like it might be improving, but is it something that we need to... Oh, sorry. Didn't realize I was going to be the first one again. But anyway, I'll go on. The second thing is the public safety issue, I think, is essential. The legislature has passed items to make the school resource officer positions somewhat of a tenuous situation. Now, listening to comments from the Chief of Police and other people, they're saying, yes, it's fine. We'll work through it. But the other point is, that's right now, and what happens in the future? Let's pass legislation that would take care of that. And the other thing that I think is vital for just the overall community involvement is that I'm done with my time, and I'm sorry I didn't get further.
Thank you. Next, Kerry Johnson.
Thank you. I think from a real practical standpoint, what I believe we'll be focusing on the council and what my priorities would be would be looking at funding sources for Gorman Park because we will be putting in a new playground and revamping that area. And we need to figure out a funding source for that. We are using our American Rescue Plan dollars for a portion of that, but we are going to need to ask our state legislators for funding and perhaps bonding. And speaking of American Rescue Plan dollars, we do have funds that we haven't allocated. That's federal money that we need to be strategic about what projects we allocate that funding towards. So that will be a priority. And then, this is not very exciting, but for us it is. The city hall really needs to be updated and renovated. And so, again, that's going to be a huge challenge for us in the council to determine what are the funding sources for that. And we'll have to be creative and strategic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ed Johnson.
The first thing I have is the keep-up funding for our police department for safety for all the people that live in the community. The second would be...
Ed, turn on your mic. Is your mic on?
Sorry. The second would be, you know, there's a lot of talk about low-income housing and so forth, but we also need some medium-income housing to support the people that make more money that want to move to St. Peter. And the third would be to renovate some more of the parks because there's a lot of the parks that are in repair. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Josh Weisenfeld.
Hi again. My top three priorities might differ slightly from the top three priorities that I think the city council in general should tackle. In particular, the three I have written down here are housing and affordability, small business development integration, which was also one of mine, and infrastructure more generally. First, time and time again, speaking with folks in the community, I hear that housing, lack of housing, has been a continuous issue. And for those that are here, housing cost is a continuous issue. Prices of utilities are high, and price of taxes are also high. So we want to make sure that our community is open to those who might not have the same means as everyone so they can feel like they can have a home comfortably here as well. Second, I've heard from a lot of business owners in town that the regulatory scheme is complicated and it's difficult to navigate. And I understand the need for strong regulations for businesses, but I want to help make that clear so business owners who want to go and pursue their dream can actually find a path to doing so while in accordance with regulations. Third, as someone who's a remote worker, I think it's difficult to appreciate how challenging it can be when you don't have internet that's fiber optic or internet that's strong enough. And dealing with longstanding issues such as infrastructure is something we need to handle.
Thank you. Next, Shanann Noel.
The three items I want to address are housing, our comprehensive plan, and financial stewardship. We've made a great deal of progress in the area of multifamily housing in St. Peter in the last few years. We were, there was a dreadful shortage of available rental properties, but we really need to turn our attention to a variety of housing options. We've got some good initiatives underway, and part of the reason I'm running for mayor is because I want to see that progress continue. Next is our comprehensive plan. We will be updating our city comprehensive plan in the next year or year and a half. And I want to make sure that that is a good process that includes community feedback, especially from our business community. Everybody needs to have a voice in that process and the vision for St. Peter. And finally, financial stewardship. We really need to look carefully at the funds we spend. I'm a taxpayer in St. Peter as well, and I want to make sure that we are using our funds to the greater good of the whole community.
Thank you. Brad DeVos is next.
Thank you. I will say the first thing I would also put at the top is housing. We have addressed, and there is still space in the rental market, but particularly single-family homes and lots for that middle group of buyers. Larger lots that people are looking to build on. We are taking measures. We are working with the school district to find, to build a development that will provide this and will provide opportunities for other people who want a larger lot to live on. Second thing is covering the cost of the fire station overruns. Due to inflation, we have significant overruns on the construction that are in excess of both what we've been granted for the sales tax and our USDA loan. We are going to be going back to the legislature to ask for an extension of the sales tax, which is currently generating more than expected. So it should help us to cover cost overruns so long as we can get approval for that. And the next is fiscal responsibility. I will just note that over the last four years, three out of the last four years, our budget increases, our tax increases have been under 6%. Three out of the last four years, the four years prior to that, there was not a single year where the tax increase was under 8%.
Thank you. And finally, Charlie Rustman.
All right. Kind of echoing, you know, one is affordable housing, not necessarily low income, but just affordable. Quick example, in St. Peter, a two-bedroom, two-bath house is $300,000. I don't know what kind of middle of the road family can even afford that with children right now. Secondly, continue funding our public safety program, continuing to make that better, not only with the resource officer in the school, but outside in the community as well. There's been some tragic things that have happened in the last year at parks with break-ins, you know, stuff like that, we could keep our focus on. And then promoting downtown business, small business downtown. It doesn't take much of a drive through downtown to realize that we have prime locations that do not have businesses in them. And it would be great for us to start promoting that and maybe changing some things. Some different businesses can come in and succeed downtown St. Peter.
Thank you. Our next two questions relate to cannabis. The first one regards licensing, and the second one regards adult use in public. Question two, what should the city council consider when licensing cannabis-related businesses? The order for answering, Charlie Rustman, Brad DeVos, Shanann Noel, Ed Johnson, Kerry Johnson, Chuck Seaman, and Josh Weisenfeld. Charlie.
This is just on the licensing of the business, correct?
Yes, the question, I'll repeat it. What should the city council consider when licensing cannabis-related businesses?
One major thing to be considered is obviously who's running the business. There's a background check for any business that comes into town. With the cannabis, it's very new. I feel like location can have a big play in that as well. You know, make sure, I'm not 100% sure of what all the guidelines are. You know, make sure that all of that is being followed. And just making sure that the company that's starting it is also going to be responsible. It goes along the lines of kind of like a liquor store, but it's uncharted territory for a lot of communities at this point.
Thank you. Next is Brad DeVos.
So, this is, as Charlie indicated, this is uncharted territory. There are, there is a great deal of state regulation that is being figured out at this point. There are going to be some very strict guidelines, similar, quite honestly, to operating a liquor store. And they're, and we are waiting to hear on that. The expectation is this actually won't even be rolled out until 2025. Some of the things the city can look at outside of that is location. How close do we want one of these businesses to be to a school or a childcare center? And those are things we're going to have to take into consideration. I believe there are going to be some very robust guidelines handed down from the state once they get it all sorted out that are appearing to actually be stricter than what it even is required in a liquor store.
Thank you. Shanann Noel is next.
Thanks. As councilmember DeVos pointed out, there are a lot of regulations at the state level that the city can't impact at all. A few things we can impact are hours of operation, location, and the number of licenses we allow within St. Peter. And so, as a council, we've already started to have those conversations. I think it's really important in those conversations to consult with local law enforcement, to use our common sense, and to also, we've got a local businesses that already sell cannabis products. And so, to work with them and learn more, it's new territory for all of us. And so, I feel like the best thing we can do is approach it with a learning mindset, learn as much as we can, and just make the best decisions for St. Peter.
Thank you. Moving on to Ed Johnson.
And like everybody else is saying, there's so many regulations that we do not know about yet. Again, it should be mandatory that we do background checks, limited amount of building or stores that come into St. Peter, kind of like they limit the amount of bars and so forth. And it's just going to be a new territory for everybody. I know there's stores in town that already sell some of this product, so they probably know more about the regulations that are coming up than we do. So that might help to talk to them people. And I think there was another part of the question that, what the city council can do in public territories for parks and so forth.
That's the next question.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they were together or not, so thank you.
Okay. And next is Kerry Johnson.
Thank you. I think licensing makes sense, following the state rules and not being overly stringent over what we do for alcohol sales and those operations. I think the market is going to determine, in a lot of ways, how many businesses can thrive and flourish in our city. And so, I don't know that we necessarily have to regulate how many businesses operate and sell cannabis products. But I am not for over-regulating. I think we should use the licensing process that we have currently and license those businesses, just like we would do for alcohol sales. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Chuck.
Reiterating, the state legislature, I'm getting back to the state legislature. Here, they pass laws and regulations, and for some reason, they, with a lot of things, they don't seem to think down the line as to what this can cause to smaller cities. You know, if you're going to do something like this, lay it out so we all know what everybody's working with. As far as the locations, I've heard some comments about they shouldn't be seen because the kids wouldn't like it or might be influenced by it. Once again, we're turning St. Peter into a nanny city or nanny state. You know, maybe I don't like the cannabis locations, maybe somebody else does. Maybe I don't like my kids or grandkids or great-grandkids now seeing McDonald's, you know, because of food, some of the food they might serve. So, as far as restricting where we do this, let us, let the people take, the market will take care of itself as far as the location. will take care of itself as far as the locations. People aren't going to come in here and have a lot of, of locations or add-on to these businesses if there's not a market for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Josh Weisenfeld.
So I would like to echo what Councilwoman Johnson said. I, I'm a big advocate for less regulations when it comes to the cannabis industry. I think the state regulations, when they're finally promulgated and passed through to the cities, are going to be fairly restrictive on all fronts. I think it, it's hard to speculate without actually seeing the final regulations as to how we, as a town, can actually be involved. I think some areas that it would make sense would be to do thorough diligence on the operations of a business, to make sure that the owners and those working in the business have the desire to abide by regulations in the state. I think it would be a bad look if we had a cannabis-based business that was operating in the black market here, so adherence to regulatory measures, I think, is a strong indication of a favorable candidate. I, I also think that there's an aspect of community safety here where, you know, we have liquor stores that likely will cause more damage to people from drunk driving than cannabis will cause from people smoking in their house or taking edibles. And being able to advocate that so people are educated in the town, I think will help weed out negative candidates on its own.
Thank you. Moving on to the second cannabis question, number three, what questions need to be addressed before St. Peter can enact an ordinance about adult use of cannabis in public? The order for answers, Josh Weisenfeld, Chuck Zeman, Brad DeVos, Charlie Rustman, Ed Johnson, Carrie Johnson, Shanaa Noel. Josh?
Yeah, so I think with adult use of cannabis, there's several paths that communities can go down, and I think we can look at three basic options, the first being exclusively private use, so the use can only be in someone's home and private property, the second being sort of limited public use, where maybe confined to smoking areas at bars or at, you know, social events, and the third would be open use like cigarettes. I, I very likely think that the state regulation will knock out the third, and so the big questions that we need to have as a community are whether we want people using cannabis products in public. And if we want them to use it in public or we don't seem to have issues with them using it in public, do we want that confined to the bar space, to the social atmosphere? And in doing so, will that account for the risk of Gustevis students potentially using more cannabis in public, which depending on, you know, long-term projections may or may not increase with this recent legalization?
Thank you. Second, Chuck.
Could you, could you state the question again, please?
What questions need to be addressed before St. Peter can enact an ordinance about adult use of cannabis in public?
Okay. I'm going to go back again. Keep harping on this, the state legislature, we, we pass things because we had, there was one extra vote this time in the state senate. So things get passed that people don't think through the results of what could happen when this gets done. And I'm not a libertarian, but if you are able to do this and you have enough wherewithal to control what you do, then let's use it, let them use it. I've never used it, I don't plan on using it, but I don't want to restrict someone from being able to do it if they're able to do it in other locations. I don't think is that big, going to be that big of a deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad DeVos is next.
So, the question is, what, what questions need to be asked about it? Quite honestly, with cannabis, it comes down to how is it being consumed? Are we smoking it? Are we consuming it by a gummy, some sort of other edible? That really does have an impact as to how we address it. If we're smoking it, we need to look at our cigarette laws, what, you know, what do we have along, what do we have as far as interior use of cigarettes? I think we need to follow our policy along those. But also, in many ways, even with gummies, we have to look at our alcohol policies and how, you know, how we let people consume alcohol in public, whether it be at, at, at an outdoor event, is it, at other activities? So I really think it all depends on the consumption of it. I think we can, we can tailor the policy based off of how the product is being consumed.
Thank you. Charlie is next, Charlie Rustman.
The first question you have to ask is, you know, what, what does the law actually say? Is there anything in the law that there's no point in asking questions? Not really the case here, but it can be consumed in several ways. You have to look at, you know, what do we do for cigarette smoking? And that was a big thing years ago. You'd almost think that it has to follow those laws in public places at certain bars. Maybe there's a patio where, where you can do this. At home, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to if it's legal. Walking alone on a sidewalk. Really, the effects of cannabis are probably far less than the effects of alcohol, you know, on life. So, if you can't drink in the park, I know, St. Peter, you, you can, but then why would you allow this? Flip side, if you, if you can drink in a park at a festival, why would we not allow it? So, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Carrie Johnson.
So in terms of what questions need to be asked, I think a question is, if cigarette smoking is allowed in an area, would we also allow cannabis smoking? I think to Councilmember DeVos's point about consumption is an important question to ask how it's being consumed. I also think a really big question is, what is the burden on enforcement if we have to, if we, if we make regulations about where adult consumption, where adult consumption takes place? And so I worry about if we make a lot of rules about this, that it puts an additional burden on our law enforcement personnel who are already managing a lot. So those are the questions that I ponder when I think about this and what we've talked about on the council.
Thank you. And Shanaa Noel.
My thoughts were very similar to Councilmember Johnson's. I think that, at the end of the day, we really, we have an excellent chief of police who's very knowledgeable and I have a lot of trust in and a great relationship with, and I would really want to listen carefully to what our local law enforcement says about how they can enforce any regulations that we can, that we would consider. I think it's very sensible to think about regulating adult consumption in the same ways we regulate tobacco usage, regu, and so, those are kind of my thoughts in a nutshell.
Did I skip you?
I think so.
Ed Johnson, sorry.
Thanks for remembering me.
I checked you out. That's why we have an assistant. Thank you. Nice catch.
Well, a lot of my thoughts, a lot of my thoughts have already been covered by most everybody here. If they would, let's say outlaw it and smoking it in the park, I think trying to regulate that would just put a burden on the police department. I have talked to the chief about, chief of police about different things. You know, I manage a bar, which we have a smoking area, and if I, if they say you can't smoke cannabis in my smoking area, they're still going to do it, no matter what. It's kind of like people not supposed to bring a dog to a dog park or a dog to a park. They still bring into Minnesota Square. So I think regulating it any more than what cigarette smoke is, smoking is, would just be too much for the police force to handle. I would like to believe that people that smoke it would have common sense not to do it around little kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to question four, please share your thoughts on the use of tax increment financing to encourage development and redevelopment of property. Again, please share your thoughts on the use of tax increment financing, TIF, to encourage development and redevelopment of property. And the order for this question, Shanaa Noel, Carrie Johnson, Charlie Rustman, Josh Weisenfeld, Chuck Zeman, Ed Johnson, Brad DeVos. Beginning with Shanaa.
Thanks. I think TIF is a useful tool that should be used judiciously. There's a time and a place for it. Definitely, we want to use that in situations where you might have a piece of property that would otherwise not be developed or redeveloped due to location or other constraints, and so I definitely think it's a good tool, it's good to use it, but it should be used judiciously.
Thank you. And next is Carrie Johnson.
Well, tax increment financing or TIF is just like sales tax. It's being used more and more because there are so few levers to pull and means for addressing big issues. And so I know the state legislature is looking, put a moratorium on sales tax because they have so many requests. I know that the reason this question is likely asked is because many communities are using it more and more, and we've used it on the council in the past as a tool and a means to spur development of housing, especially affordable housing. And so it's a necessary tool, but I think we also need to contact and communicate with Nicollet County and the school district because they are impacted whenever we set up a TIF district, and so making sure that they're in the loop when we are considering that, I think is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlie Rustman.
It, it can be used. I feel like if it's going to be a project on, let's say, a bad property, an undesirable property, we could go further as a city, maybe try to do some budgeting, some finance, maybe find some other, other resources other than going directly to TIF. So, thank you.
Thank you. Josh Weisenfeld is next.
So I think it can be used effectively when we're very selective with what we're using a TIF-style financing for. I think if the large-scale community benefit outweighs the detriment that would otherwise be implemented, I think it's a viable option. That being said, with the extensive changes to both federal funding and state funding, I think we have plenty of avenues that we can pursue before TIF funding, and if we're able to find some sort of funds before increasing any sort of tax, I think it's a benefit to the community as a large to do so.
Thank you. Next, Chuck Zeman.
I look at TIF, and I guess I always have, as a necessary evil. You know, it'd be great if every, if developers had their own money to put into these things, but it's something that helps them get the funding. Basically, TIF will cover expenses, underground parking, that type of thing, asphalt. The, the other thing is, you know, it's great that we have these new housing developments, but something that always kind of gets pushed to the side is, yeah, there is, I had these multi-housing buildings are going back on our, on the tax rolls, but you're not going to see, most of the times, you aren't going to see any return on taxes for 26 years, up to 26 years on this. And granted, after 26 years, yeah, great, but it's not something that we see an immediate tax increase on because it's costing to do this. The other thing is, the schools, they get tax, or child credits because they're losing out on the taxes that are going to be generated by this. The county is, you know, too bad, they don't get anything for it, and what the city gets is future payments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Ed Johnson.
Excuse me. I think we just got to base it on where the, what kind of building is going to be put up. Will it benefit the whole community and where the property is that it's going to get put up at? Thank you.
Thank you. And Brad DeVos.
So, I, I believe TIF comes down to what is, what's being built. We've used it for the last four apartment complexes we've built here that have been on empty land, except for a while, we had a parking lot, but that's still empty, we, which has brought over 200 apartment, 200 new units into this. While yes, for the next 12 to 14 years, not 26, but 12 to 14 years, these aren't generating tax revenue. Every time one of those people flushes a toilet, turns on their TV, runs their sink, that's enterprise fund, that's money that goes into our utilities, which part of that also comes back to our general fund. This is not a complete loss. The school district will still get their per pupil financing as well. As far as other, other developments beyond housing, it's all relative. We had one of the bidders on the fire station requested TIF for their development. That bid, that bid was one of the first ones tossed out because there was no need in a competitive situation. I think TIF, in the case of housing, especially in such a shortage of housing we have here, is a critical tool that we have to use, and it's not just an empty revenue stream.
Thank you. Question number five, a draft code of conduct was shared at a recent council workshop. In general, do you support the concept of a code of conduct for the city council? Why or why not? The order for this begins Brad DeVos, Ed Johnson, Chuck Zeman, Charlie Rustman, Josh Weisenfeld, Shanaa Noel, and Carrie Johnson.
Yes, actually, I support a code of conduct. I was actually pushing it. St. Peter actually is an outlier. There are several cities around us that actually do have written codes of conduct, so what we were doing was we were bringing St. Peter in line with several of those. We modeled our codes of, our code of conduct after those other cities. I think it lays out the expectations of how we are expected to behave, how we are expected to interact, not just with other council members, but with commissions and with the public. And I think having something laid out with, you know, while they're not major consequences, but there are consequences written out, I think it's something that is useful in the future.
Thank you.
As a note, we actually passed that code of conduct at last night's city council meeting.
Thank you. Ed Johnson.
I do think we need some type of code, code of conduct. I apologize for not reading through the minutes about it, but, but I do think something has to be done because there has been some issues, and we have to protect the council and the citizens in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Zeman.
Yep, I, I agree. You know, code of conduct is fine. You'd like to think that people would not need it, but if signing a piece of paper or handling yourself to a code of conduct is what's going to make a difference, then fine. We can do it. It's not, not something, as someone previously said, that how do you, how do you uphold it? But sure, doesn't make any difference. It's going to, if it's something that we think is, is going to make a change or is going to help, by all means.
Thank you. Charlie Rustman.
Short answer, yes. Really, as a council member, you should be following, even in unwritten code of conduct, being in public office, being the face of the community. As a lot of us know, in day-to-day life, it's 2023, you have to write this stuff down, you have to get a signature on it. So yes, I, I do support the code of conduct.
Thank you. Josh Weisenfeld.
I, I generally agree with everything that's been said. I think what hasn't been said in this relation is it also provides some accountability of the city council members and the mayor for the residents of the community. It gives them an expectation of how their representatives will act and conduct themselves and in business for the city, which I think really is a benefit to everyone in this community if there's a level of accountability there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Shanaa Noel.
Yes, I did vote for a code of conduct, and so I, I highly support one, and I think the, one of the benefits of a code of conduct is it really puts everybody on the same page in terms of expectations. We should have high expectations for ourselves. We represent our city, and we need to do that to the highest standards. It also, in addition to council-working relationships, it also guides us on how we interact with staff. If you go to any League of Minnesota City events and things of that nature where you're interacting with people from across Minnesota, you hear a lot of stories about really inappropriate behavior, and I, I have really high standards. behavior. And I have really high standards for us here in St. Peter. And so, I think the code of conduct was a great addition to what we do in terms of council governance.
Thank you. And Carrie Johnson.
I voted yes for the code of conduct, and frankly, it's, it was needed. It got ugly a few years ago, and we wanted to prevent that from happening again by having really clear expectations for council members on how we interact with each other and how we interact with city staff, something to hold ourselves accountable to, something to point to when things are getting tense and we're being less than professional. And I think it really helps set new council members up for success by sharing those expectations upfront in orientation so that they know that there's a code of conduct that can be a guide. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six. What additional incentives can the city put in place to motivate homeowners, businesses, and farmers to engage in practices to protect the soil, water, and air? The order for this question, Carrie Johnson, Charlie Rustman, Josh Weisenfeld, Chuck Seaman, Ed Johnson, Brad DeVos, and Shanaw Noel.
Thank you. I, we do have some incentives in place, and it's, for us, it's the constant battle of public education and getting the word about those programs out there. But I also know that we're going to be working with our utility cooperative, electric utility cooperative, to determine what incentives might be available for electric cars as well. So, that's in the future. One sustainability issue that's close to my heart is stormwater. And there is a lot the public and homeowners and farmers and all sorts of folks can do to help, help with stormwater. The stormwater goes into our detention basins, and eventually the end route is the Minnesota River. We have a permit where it's really costly if we violate the conditions of that permit. And so, it's just really important that we are mindful about when we're mowing our grass and raking our leaves into the street and putting stuff down storm drains, that we don't do that because it has an impact and it goes somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Rustman.
I do know the city is a part of SIMPA. I do know that that helps with guidelines and resources for saving energy. We do have a very good wastewater plant already. I do know we have fairly stringent stormwater policies in town. With, where I work at, we have added on. We've had to put these basins in, and sometimes it's, it's quite the fight to get the approval for your stormwater runoff. We do have a responsibility to the Minnesota River being right next to us, so I do understand that. Energy's come a long way. We could utilize some solar power energy. I do think solar panel fields are ugly, but they do help, as well as offering incentives and rebates for environmentally friendly equipment, energy-rated appliances, light bulbs, items like that.
Thank you. Josh Weisenfeld.
So, I think that's exactly right. We need to look at types of either financial or appearance incentives that will allow both businesses and individuals to be more encouraged to look to alternative energy sources. I think there's some very valuable rebates that exist on a wider level for solar power. However, solar has its limitations being in the Midwest with limited viability in the winter. So, looking to other sources such as hydroelectric or wind turbines, I think would be very beneficial. I think on a more personal level, being able to find breaks in utilities for having these types of alternative, alternative energy sources in personal residences, I think would be helpful. And some of that is actually in, more or less in place already where if someone has solar panels, their utility bill will inherently be less since they're using less electricity. And so, being able to educate more folks in the community about these alternatives that will overall reduce their costs in, over a longer period of time, will help the situation.
Thank you. Chuck Seaman.
Yes, you asked about additional. I guess we can always add things and add things as time goes on. You know, we may have some things that aren't even developed yet that we can, we can use and do. Mr. Rustman said, and I agree with him, you know, as a city, we do a really, really, I think, good job with that. Kudos to the, to the departments that take care of all these things for runoff and everything else. The problem I have with some of this, especially with the solar, is, you know, we look at the solar as far as it saving the energy and being a supplement to that, but we always seem to forget that up to 90% of these solar panels are made in China. And China is one of the biggest violators of human rights for the Uighur Muslims to manufacture these. Basically, they're slaves in doing it. But we don't seem to think about that. We kind of go like this because it's solar. And when you have seven-year-old kids in the cobalt mines pulling out cobalt for these, where is the concern there? That's my big question when it comes to solar.
Thank you. Ed Johnson is next.
Well, I know the city's done a lot of work already with all their retention ponds and everything else from water, stormwater runoff and so forth. And I had to deal with that a little bit when we put our new parking lot in at the Redmond also. So, I think the city's trying to educate people. Some people don't listen because you go down the road and you can see grass laying out on the street that somebody's blew their grass out and so forth, and that's a big hazard also. As far as rebates for light bulbs and stuff like that, updated equipment for your kitchen and so forth, I would agree with something like that. As far as solar fields, what's going to happen to them in 20 years when they quit working? I know they're talking about solar field out here, but, you know, with SIMPA, we're already involved with solar fields. We, just not in our area. So, I'm kind of concerned about what happens to all that stuff after it goes away. Thanks.
Thank you. And Brad DeVos.
So, one of the big things the city actually is doing right now is, and it's, well, is going to be coming up soon, is leaf collection. Our curbside leaf collection is actually a major thing for our stormwater runoff, keeping those leaves out of our stormwater system going into the river. That's actually a big part of that process. And the city, right now, we've got grants that we are working with farmers west of town to try and work on ways to curb their runoff, the chemicals from the fields and stuff which get into our drinking water system. Things we're looking at, continue, you know, rebates and expanding our rebate program, encouraging someone, not requiring someone, but encouraging someone to switch to an electric water heater from a gas water heater to an electric stove from a gas stove. Once again, these would be incentives, not requirements, but that's a way we can push more towards the electrification to reduce the use of our fossil fuels. As our energy mix continues to move towards cleaner energy and less carbon intensive, the moving towards more electrification of our appliances will be useful, as well as when we, as more and more electric cars are coming online.
Thank you. And last, Shanaw Noel.
Well, the hard part of going last is a lot of great ideas have already been mentioned. I had written down rebates that the city provides as a great incentive for folks, our relationship with SIMPA, who is working really hard to move toward greener energy, stormwater, the study that we're doing right now regarding nitrates in our drinking water are all great efforts. The one thing that wasn't mentioned was our recent ordinance change to allow for natural landscapes in people's yard. And, you know, that allows for things like rain gardens as well, which are a great impact on our stormwater. And in terms of natural landscapes, they require maintenance. We're not saying that you can just stop mowing your lawn and call that a natural landscape. You can't. But if people convert some portion of their lawn into a natural landscape using native plants, you can really reduce a lot of emissions. One single lawnmower produces more emissions than my son's 1998 Camry does in an entire year. And so, that's got big impact, and residents are excited about it.
Thank you. And question seven will be our last question, and at 8:10, we'll begin our closing remarks. Question seven, yes or no. Do you support the decision to continue the presence of school resource officers within the district? Please explain. The order will be Shanaw Noel, Josh Weisenfeld, Brad DeVos, Chuck Seaman, Charlie Rustman, Carrie Johnson, and Ed Johnson. Shanaw.
Thanks. I absolutely support our school resource officer. In particular, we have a wonderful resource officer in John Hughes. He does great work with our students. A few years ago, that program wasn't going as well. And when I came on the council, we sort of saw that there wasn't any oversight. There was not the communication that needed to happen between the city and the school district because we're partners in providing that SRO to the school district. We worked to develop procedures where communication was improved, where Officer Hughes now has a better idea of what is, what are in the bounds of his job. They're not asking him to come in and arrest students. He's there as a resource that are in SRO, is really important. And I know he's developed deep, meaningful relationships with students. He's a tremendous resource to the school district. And so, I support school resource officers, and in particular, the excellent officer we have here in St. Peter.
Thank you. Josh Weisenfeld.
I also support the school resource officer, and I'm not sure I can say it any better than Shanaw just did. I, as someone who went to the school system in St. Peter, I have very positive memories of having a school resource officer in school. I think it demystified the police a bit for me as a younger child. And I think with, you know, overall mixed relationships with the police in the community across the United States, being able to help educate kids that police can be there to help, and especially our own police department, who I actually have a lot of faith in. And I want kids to be able to feel like they can reach out to a police officer if they can't find their parents or they need help or, and having Officer Hughes in the school, I think, is a really good start for that.
Thank you. Brad DeVos.
Absolutely. Number one, we have an excellent police off, school resource officer in Officer Hughes. The kids love him. They trust there. My children think he's absolutely great. Part of the thing that makes it so successful beyond having the best officer possible for it is we have a detailed agreement, as Mayor Noel pointed out. We now have an agreement that outlines strongly the expectations. The officer is not supposed to be a disciplinarian. Staff is not supposed to use the threat of an officer as discipline. That was one of the things. Staff would occasionally threaten students that they would have to see, see the officer. Officer Hughes is not there for that. He's there for the kids to learn how to trust the police and to see them as a resource, to see them as something that's helpful. I, we don't have any concerns because of the agreement we have in place that we need to pull him out whatsoever.
Thank you. Chuck Seaman.
Yes, I also support the, the school resource officer program. As I stated earlier, there are a lot of communities that are concerned about this because of perception of tying the hands of the resource officers. The legislature, and even Representative Brand, who said something about it against the governor, his own party, that things and changes need to be made to it. I get back to the current situation. It works now, but Officer Hughes may not be there in X amount of years. Who knows? So, we need to have legislation that takes care of people and things when the good people that we have are no longer here. Not to say they can't be replaced with good people, but this legislation does not allow for that in a lot of situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Rustman.
I also support the school resource officer. Even when I was back in high school, we had a school resource officer. Perception can happen very, at a very young age, to where it could skew you through your whole adult life. Having those officers in the school, interacting with kids in a positive way, which they have been doing, that can change the perception for that student all through adulthood. It takes the fear away. Some people are afraid of police officers. I don't think we have that issue here in St. Peter, but it is great. It also adds an element of safety and visibility there as well, so.
Thank you. Carrie Johnson.
Answer, to answer the question, yes. Officer Hughes sets the bar really, really high for school resource officers. And we have to make sure, along with the school district, that it's a good system despite what person is in the role. And so, I think we've worked out some of the kinks in the last few years with the, working with the school district to form an agreement that has clear expectations. I think it really works well because there's strength in communication between the school district and the city. The superintendent and, I believe, the cultural liaisons and our chief of police and SRO Hughes meet very regularly to communicate. And then, I also think this program works because of the tremendous efforts on our police department's part, and Officer Hughes does a lot of coordinating. But over the summer, I mean, the, the police are out just saturated in all these fun community events for kids to establish those positive relationships. And so, the system works because we're actively working to make it work, and we're doing a great job at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Ed Johnson.
To answer the question, we do need an officer at the schools. And Officer Hughes, I've worked with, being on the fire department, I've worked with him for quite a few years on doing different things for the kids and training. And so, fire safety and stuff like that, I've been involved with him. And some of the things we've done at the community parks, we've worked together. And I think, and someday, he might not be here, but that's why the city, school district, and the police department got to continue working together to keep that system working like it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder, as we begin our closing remarks, you get a minute and 30 seconds for your closing remarks, and we'll do them in the reverse order, beginning with Chuck Seaman.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the Gabor and the Herald for this event tonight. And I'd also like to thank supporters in the past for the long time I've been involved with this, and I'm looking for, to ask for their support for this upcoming election on November 7. I bring experience, common sense, and demonstrated ability to get things done, have my whole life. The one thing that I want to address that never really got an opportunity was, the thing that I hear a lot about is, we're raising everybody's rates for most of the utilities, water, sewer, electric, you know, it all keeps going up. And also during that time, the council had the nerve to raise their salary. The, one of the arguments that I heard was because it'll encourage other people that might have to take care of childcare in order to be here. Where are they in order to run? Where are they? They're not here. Mr. Rustman, I talked to him about it. He didn't even know he got paid for this. So, he's not one. Mr. Weisenfeld, when I talked to him earlier, indicated that he did not have kids that needed that situation. So, I'm going to present that we roll back those wages to what they were prior, to what the changes were made, $8,000 a year for the mayor and $6,000 a year for the council members. And with that, I will make this offer. I will take no pay for my tenure if the remaining six people will take a 50% reduction in their pay. So, let's see where your commitment is to the community. Is it to, actually to the community, or is it because you can make a few extra dollars doing this? Thank you.
Next, Josh Weisenfeld.
Thank you. As we come to a close, I want to express my sincere gratitude to each and every one of you for your time, attention, and engagement tonight. I'd also like to thank the other candidates on the stage for their courteous and respectful nature during this forum. Tonight, we discussed various issues relating to our community, but these are certainly not the only questions and concerns I've heard from members around the community. I want to encourage anyone who wishes to have their voices heard to come find me. I will sit down and chat. If you find me at any of the social establishments in town, we can have a beer together. I want every person in our community to know their voice is heard and important. I'm not just a candidate. I'm here as your neighbor, your friend, and a member of your community. Together, we can work friend, and a member of your community. Together, we can work to create a space we can all call home, where everyone has an opportunity to thrive. I humbly ask for your support, your trust, and your vote in this upcoming election. Together, we can write the next chapter in the story of St. Peter. Thank you.
And Charlie Rustman next.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, the Herald, and the Chamber of Commerce for putting on this forum. I'd like to thank the other candidates for taking time out of their surely busy lives to come and participate. Again, I have lived and worked and served in this community my whole life. I do not see that ending anytime in the near future. I approach the city council position as a, as kind of the everyday, blue-collar worker that populates St. Peter. I come with a vested interest in seeing this community prosper. Lastly, I do encourage everybody attending and watching this to go out and vote on November 7. Whoever your preferred candidate is, these local elections truly are very important. So, thank you.
Brad DeVos.
So thanks again to the League, Chamber, and Herald for hosting this forum. It gave the voters an opportunity to see the difference in candidates. Now, I didn't expect to come to a Dutch auction where we decide who the best candidate is by picking the lowest bidder. But if you wish to base your candidate, your vote off of who's going to be the cheapest, you get what you pay for. One of the most satisfying things about being a city council member is when you can see the difference you made in your community. If you can't make a difference, then why are you here? During an EDA meeting, when I proposed a change to COVID, to increase COVID assistance to restaurants from $10,000 to $16,500, a change I made on the fly, that day, I made a difference. When Councilmember Carrie Johnson helped us cure hundreds of thousand dollars in Main Street revitalization grants for our downtown, that day, she made a difference. When Mayor Noel recently spoke strongly and passionately against a commenter who was alleging threats from our Islamic community, she showed definitively that our current leadership is truly welcoming to all. That day, she made a difference. I am proud of my service over the last four years. It truly has been a blessing to be able to help during this tremendous time of change, and I don't regret any decisions that I've made because they've been in the best interest to the community. I hope on November 7, you will let me continue to make a difference for another four years.
And Carrie Johnson next.
Thank you. I guess I should start by saying that I use my council member stipend for childcare. I'm a single mom, and it enables me to be able to do this work, and I hope that it enables others to do the work as well, and similar to my position. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the other hosts of this forum, and thank you to our friend behind the camera, Tony over there, and thank you to those who took the time to watch this forum. Again, my name is Carrie Johnson, and I am running for a second term in Ward 1, which is the North Ward. A vote for me means I will continue to provide excellent service to you, listening and being responsive to your thoughts and concerns. I will feel the weight of every decision because each decision has an impact on you. I will be a careful steward of public funds, and I will ensure the services you pay for help meet the needs of our community and sustain our vitality into the future. I promise to work together with my fellow council members, with the city staff, and with stakeholders to help make smart policy decisions and have a positive impact for years to come. I love this community, and I am so grateful to serve. I hope you will make a plan to vote on or before November 7. Thank you.
And Shanann Noel.
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for all the work you do, and to the other candidates. Thanks for being here tonight. It's wonderful to hear from all of you. I'd like to talk again about my priorities, which are growing housing solutions, building on the strengths of our diverse community, and environmental sustainability. I'd also like to talk about civility and professionalism. That is something that has been highly important to me. I think we see that in our current council, and it's been an honor and privilege to serve for the last four years on the city council. I want to continue to work hard on your behalf because I believe in St. Peter. Thank you, and I would be honored to earn your vote.
And finally, Ed Johnson.
Well, like everybody else, I'd like to thank you for hosting the forum tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who's going to watch this on TV, and thank all the other candidates for being here. Again, I got a short version for my closing statement. I've been dedicated to this community. As I said, through my four years of council, being on the fire department, teaching all the kids, I want to stick with the common sense approach and leadership, and I'm willing to listen to no ideas too small or too big, willing to listen to anybody that wants to talk to me, and it's pretty easy to find me. Thanks.
Thank you all for your concluding statements. This concludes our forum. I'd like to thank the candidates for making time for the forum and for sharing your thoughts on the issues. For those at home, if we did not get to your question, please contact the candidates directly. I want to thank our candidates for participating, and to our co-hosts, the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce and St. Peter Herald, to the St. Peter Community Center and the City of St. Peter, thank you. Many thanks to my other League volunteers this evening for assisting, and a special thanks to Tony for recording and filming with St. Peter Public Access. As we mentioned at the beginning, this will be shown on the St. Peter Public Access TV station, on their YouTube channel, and on the League of Women Voters website. And a final note to those at home, as many of our candidates have said, "Vote." Early voting began on Friday, September 22 at the Niklet County Courthouse. Election Day is Tuesday, September 7. If you are not currently registered to vote and you want to register prior to Election Day, you must register by October 16. You may also register on Election Day at your polling place. For more information about voting and these candidates, please visit the Secretary of State's website, www.mnvotes.org. Thank you.